Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us at our regular board meeting tonight, being held at Central High School. Now we'll pass it on to Ms. List.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6 et cec, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising in the Star Ledger, El Nuevo Coqui, Haiti Progress, and Luso Americano newspapers, and by distribution to administrative offices in the Newark Public Schools. A copy of this meeting notice was forwarded to City Hall for posting. This is a regular meeting, Tuesday, March 26, 2019, 6:08.
If everyone could please join us now in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Present.
Ms. Gaddy?
Present.
Ms. Gomez?
Present.
Ms. Haynes?
Present.
Ms. Hill?
Present.
Ms. Norton?
Present.
Ms. Owens?
Present.
Mr. Padilla?
Present.
Ms. Garcia?
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you, Ms. List. And now we'll hand it over to Principal Brown, who will bring us welcoming remarks. All right, we're gonna move on to the school board of recognitions until we can locate Ms. Principal Brown. I'm gonna hand it over to Board Member Gomez, who will lead us in the student recognitions.
Good evening, everyone. So... So, tonight, we want to recognize, for this March board meeting, two students. The first student is Hasna Jan... And I'm sorry if I pronounced the name incorrectly, please correct me later. Hasna Jania Ali. If you could please stand up, thank you so much. Hasna is the senior class president. She finished second in the humorous interpretation at Harvard University.
That's right.
Second place in Princeton humorous interpretation, and second place in Montville humorous interpretation. She is also part of Central High School Dual Enrollment Program at Essex County College. So, tonight, we want to congratulate her. Thank you so much, Hasna. Where's... Okay, so the next student we want to recognize is Yamin Reddick. There's Yamin. So, Yamin is a Central High School student who won the Octa Finals Dramatic Interpretation at Harvard University. He placed fifth place at the University of Pennsylvania. Oral interpretation, and first place at Hunterdon Central Oral Interpretation, and third place Dual Interpretation at Princeton. He is captain of the debate team, and his academic performance in class and in the national debate circuit has resulted in city, state, and national recognitions. Tonight, we recognize him. So, we also want to recognize parents. So, like I said in the last board meeting, I'm the Chair of Community Engagement Committee for the Newark Board of Education. And we wanted to recognize parents from each ward... Well, from each school leadership team that has been doing outstanding work in our schools. So, these are the parents. I'm gonna say them all at once, and they can all, four of them, come up at once, and we can take a picture. So, the first parent is Cheryl, and I apologize ahead of time if I say any names incorrectly. So, the first parent, she is a high school... A parent of a high school student. Cheryl Disasso is the mother of Imani Disasso. She is being recognized for her outstanding service to Central High School as a member of the PTA. She has quietly serviced even while she was struggling with cancer. She ensures her child and that Central High School is being supported. Thank you for being a quiet inspiration. Cheryl can come up? So, the next parent is from our North Ward School Leadership Team. Ms. Leslie McGlaughlin from Luis Muñoz Marine. Ms. McGlaughlin is a very hands-on, loving, involved parent. She is at the school on a regular basis. Ms. McGlaughlin also volunteers as the assistant coach of the girls' basketball team. You can always depend on her to lend a helping hand within the school and any outside activities pertaining to the school and our students. Please come up, Ms. McGlaughlin. Our next parent is from the Southwest School Leadership Team. Sakia Isgari. She is a mother... She is the mother of third-grade student Ale Abada and eighth-grade student Mariam Abada. Mrs. Isgari has been extremely supportive of Mount Vernon in our families. Mrs. Isgari routinely volunteers her time to assist with school initiatives, including our Fresh Food Fridays. She was instrumental in the success of our holiday clothing drive, which provided clothing for 285 families. Thank you, Mrs. Isgari. So, our next and final parent that we are recognizing tonight is from the East Central Ward School Leadership Team. Maria Rodriguez from Oliver Street School volunteers consistently in the school and is supportive of all the students, family, and staff. The school can always depend on her to assist with the school programs, and she is an asset to Oliver Street School. If she can come up, Ms. Rodriguez. And if we can please have the assistant superintendents from our leadership teams please come up to the stage, and the principals as well. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's give the students and those parents a big round of applause. And I just want to thank the principals who were present for taking additionally out of their time. Very grateful that you were here. This is something that the board has, in fact, wanted to do as part of their recognitions of our parents, and it is what we will be doing. One parent from each of our school leadership teams, from the North, East Central, Southwest, and the high schools. And we look forward to recognizing four parents every month that we conduct our public meetings. At this time, we have two more student recognitions, two, in fact... Actually, three student recognitions to complete. The first is for the incredible performance of the University High School Lady Phoenix. And we have Board Member Owens reading... Sorry, Board Member Haynes reading.
...is Vice President. The University High School Phoenix Girl Basketball Team for winning the NJSIAA North Second Grouped One-Sectional Tournament Championship and the Group One State Tournament Championship. The players are, and please forgive me if I do not pronounce your name correctly, blame it on my mind and not my heart, Zaima Swent, Jocelyn Williams, Sidney Williams, Tanisha Tucker, Naisha Holmes, Karim Bevz, Wadia Findley, Renea Kendi... Kennedy, Alana Nichols, Tara Johnson, Aida Diane, Samaya Bryant, Ramaya Di... Seo... Gao, Amira Anderson Datous, Nasan Holmes, and Sajida Mercer. Coaches Amiri Baraka Jr., Bernard Chase, Joanne Miller... Jana Miller, Cornelius Hunt, and trainer Caesar Manjares. Yes, coaches, please join on stage as well.
Go at University!
Should've been a Phoenix!
All right, let's give a big round of applause. Coach?
I want to thank Superintendent Roger Leon, first of all. Let's give it up for Roger Leon for the tremendous support that he gave our team and our city during this time. Thank you, the great board that we have here. Thank you, board members, for recognizing my ladies here, and our ladies in Newark, New Jersey. You should've been a Phoenix! You want to come to University? The door is open. And again, thank you, Principal Mendez.
Excellent. Thank you very much, congratulations, ladies. All right, will the board members please stay here? And now, ladies and gentlemen, our very own Group Four State Champions from Eastside High School with Board Member Owens.
Good evening, everyone. So, we also want to honor the Eastside Boys Basketball Team. So, as you hear your name, please come up to the stage. So, the Eastside Red Raiders Boys Basketball Team, we are congratulating them for winning the Christmas Holiday Tournament, the Essex County Tournament, NJSIAA North Two Group Four Sectional Championship, and the Group Four Tournament Championship. The players are Anas Emos, Jeter DeLeón, Altawan Hawkins, James Paul, Denzel Small, Andrew Spate, Jarrett White, Naseer Johnson, Micah Johnson, Gabriel Olinigi, Cassis Adesina, David Olinigi, Jazier Gaskin, and Naheem Carter. The head coaches are Bryant Garvin and Anthony Taveras, assistant coaches John Thomason, Lamar Williams, and volunteer coaches Troy Long, Shaquon Johnson, Corey Chandler, and Mike Maffadden, and trainer Carolina Castro.
Board members move forward, and we'll have the basketball team stand behind us.
Coaches, coaches... It's not on. All right, let's... Let's hear for Coach Taveras and Coach Garvin. And this is, in fact, breaking news. This is probably New Jersey's first. We will have to actually research it. But this is out on NJ.com. Do I really tell people to go look at blogs or things of that nature? But these two coaches are New Jersey's Coaches of the Year. All right, some remarks from Coach Taveras. Second time, well, that's what I'm talking about.
I'd like to thank Superintendent Leon and all the board members for recognizing us, just like I said a few minutes into cafeteria. It's always quite an honor to come to events like this after all the hard work that we put in, in the winter, the four or five months of coaching during the winter. To be recognized by the school board is just a great honor for all the players and myself. And I will publicly issue a challenge to all the players to, in four years from now, that the coaches would love to go to their college graduation. We have ten... Thank you. We have ten players currently in college playing right now. Two of them will graduate at the end of June, one from Caldwell College and one from NJIT. And that's what it's all about. We want all these players to graduate and get a four-year degree from college. So, thank you, Mr. Leon, and everyone, all the board members.
I just want to thank everyone for all the love and support that you've given us throughout the course of the years. This is my 22nd year in Newark, and I appreciate every aspect of you guys coming out and watching us play. And then, these young men, they deserve all the respect in the world because they put their lives on pause to come out and play basketball for us and be student athletes. And that's a major commitment to them, to do such a great job throughout the course of the year. They spend a lot of time with us, about 10 to 12 hours per day, and it's amazing with the things they have done. So, I might have to go off to all the student athletes that we have and the coaches as well. Thank you.
All right, let's hear it for Eastside High School. A big round of applause. Thanks, you guys. So, if the board members could stay here... So, we had... At a previous board meeting, we recognized students that were doing academically well, and then, we recognized some incredible student athletes. And when speakers came to the microphone who arrived late, they arrived when we were honoring student athletes, and they said, you know, "This school district isn't about just student athletes. Actually, it's about being on time." Because in this school district, what we are trying to do is model for everyone that there is excellence in everything that we actually wind up doing. It is Newark, after all. We will allow people... We will allow people to talk bad about us. We will allow people to write about us. But in the reality, people need to understand that if you live in the city of Newark, if you are and care about our students, then you are aware that there is greatness that just walked off the stage. So, those were our incredible athletes, because we're gonna beat you on the court. And now, what we're doing is recognizing students who have done an incredible job in speech and debate. And we begin. This year, in oral interpretation, ranking fifth in the entire state of New Jersey... Let me share that again. Out of all of the high school students in New Jersey, he is number five. His name is, listen carefully, Yamin Reddick. In Duo in Dramatic Interpretation, this incredible young man ranked fourth in dramatic interpretation. His name, Isaiah Briggs. Joining Isaiah in Duo Interpretation, this is a competition in speech where it's not one student, it is two students actually competing with each other against two students... Proud of you. In... Competing with two students, Isaiah is also a Duo Interpretation, and his partner is number second place in the whole state of New Jersey, Isaiah Briggs with Zawari Kabazimya. Yep. Here, Isaiah's your second place in Duo. I am so proud of you. You are so great. So, let's give a round of applause for these three students. So... Just like our athletes compete against high school students all across New Jersey, these three students competed all across New Jersey. And, you know, while we know that they are number one to us, you know, Yamin, fifth place, Isaiah, fourth place, and then, the duo of both of these two students together won second place all in the state of New Jersey. Let's give them another round of applause. Yeah, but... But I understand that some of you came to a board meeting and didn't realize when we said Newark, it was Newark, New Jersey. Because this young lady to my right, her name is Zawari Kabazimya. She is New Jersey's state champion in oral interpretation. There's nothing wrong with fifth. There's nothing wrong with fourth, and there's nothing wrong in second. Hello, she's number one. I am so sorry. I... You know what? That's because... That's because our great principal threw me off this evening. So, we have Coach Filbert and Coach Guruyong. Watch how this works. Watch how this works. Watch how this works. This young man right here graduated from Barringer High School. He is currently substituting at one of our schools, okay? And he will soon be before this board as a nomination for teacher here in the Newark Public Schools. All right, so let's get a group shot. All right? All right, congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. We want to make sure is Osmani Sanogo here? So, we want to take this opportunity to recognize her for incredible performance in Lincoln Douglas Debate from Science Park High School. Let's give her a big round of applause, and we'll make sure that this award gets to her. All right, thank you. Here we go. Come back, y'all. So, he is so tall that I didn't see him, and I still don't see him. Where are you? Dennis, where is he? Yeah, Ousmane, where is he? Okay, I didn't see him. Okay. Well, we'll make sure this goes out to him. A big congratulations for his performance. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we need a motion to approve the minutes of the board meetings of February 19 and February 26.
Motion, second.
Any discussion? Any questions by board members? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And now we'll go back to greetings from the principal. If Principal Brown can now address the audience. Thank you.
Good evening, all of the auspicious guests that's on the podium. I thank Superintendent Roger Leon and the board members and all the wonderful people that's on the panel. I just want to welcome everyone in the audience and on stage to Central High School. We were founded in 1911 and we are still that lady on the hill that gives a beacon of light and hope. One thing that Central High School offers to everyone is a family. It's one thing to say it, but it's another thing to live it. So, we are actually probably the model school for being community partnerships and community driven. So, I just want to thank everyone for coming to this wonderful school. I want to also just honor all the great people that won something and made Central look great throughout this year. We are also just, our HOSA, our dental academy just won HOSA Champions. They are second place in the chapter. So, let's give it up for our dental academy for winning that competition. They also just placed third place for a PSA that they did in order to convince you that smoking is not the option. And so, they did a PSA on health and they won third place. So, let's give it up to our dental academy. But we are the home of five academies. We have a freshman academy because we know that transition to school is tough. And so, we have a freshman academy that actually teaches character development. We have a social justice academy that preaches activism and actually being the light of the world and being the change that we want the world to see. We have a pre-engineering academy that works to be the creative mind in engineering. We also have a dental academy which I just mentioned. Where you can work to be a dental hygienist in school and further your studies to also be a dentist. We also have an environmental studies academy, which also does a great job in ensuring that we are environmentally sound. So, I just want to give it up to all my academy leaders for all the great work that they do and all the young people who are getting pathways. We also just added for the first time this year, our brand new swim team. So, we excited about our swim team. We're excited about our social groups and all the wonderful activities that we engage young people. One of our models is at Central High School, you can be who you are. You can be yourself and we embrace diversity. We are one of the most diverse schools. We teach the bilingual population, French and Creole. And we have people from all the continents in the world in our building. So, I'm excited about being at the helm of a school that is so diverse. We are excited about what we're doing at Central High School. And more importantly, we're excited about the mark that our young people are making on the world. So, it's one thing as an adults to brag about a school. But it's another thing when young people put you on the map over and over and over and over and over again. So, I just want to shout out my student population for actually being outstanding. So, let's give it up for every Central High School student that make us an outstanding school. So, anybody who's ever attended, you have to attend it to believe it and to feel it. So, I can't explain it. It's something you just have to live and experience. And I'm honored to be a part of that program. And I'm honored to have been working at Central High School first as the vice principal and now as the principal. And I'm excited to stand in the gap and speak for you and celebrate your greatness. We have a model that we are cultivating energetic, naturally talented, responsible, altruistic leaders. And that's truly who they are. But this is my time to get out the way. Superintendent Roger Leon did a great job at showcasing all the accomplishments. Actually, the speech and debate coach, let's give it up for Dennis Filbert. Let's give him a round of applause. So, I just want to congratulate Eastside and Mr. Tavares and thank you. We played a great game. That was one of the best games we had this year with Eastside. So, I celebrate how nail-biting that game is. And I give respect to Coach Tavares. But I also want to say that this coach over here just won the Diamond Award because his young people won so many tournaments and placed in so many Nationals that he won the Diamond Award for speech and debate. Let's give it up for Filbert. Keep on working and doing what you're doing. But we as the whole school always normally do a presentation. And the best way to show you why these young people are going to Nationals. They are on their way to Nationals, the Tournament of Championships in Kentucky for the NCFL Grand Nationals in Milwaukee and Wisconsin and the NSDA Nationals in Dallas, Texas. So much so that they have to miss graduation because they're in so many tournaments. But instead of me talking about it, I want to showcase a couple of presentations. So, you'll see why they are the winners. So, let's give it up for our Central High School debate team. And I turn it over to them. Okay, they say that they can project. It just needs to be really, really silent. They have to use the mic, they said. Okay, no problem.
The first time I saw him was at a singles party in the springs of 1975. My attention was focused on those shining hazel eyes of his and his equally dazzling words.
That day, the wind was blowing at 50 miles an hour. We were flying, literally, flying across the water. Ah, he was so invigorate. But sometimes, when the breeze is gentle, the boat flies gladly, softly and peacefully. And the sail is a dreamy experience.
Joel's words entranced me. Gosh! What a man. According to the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, domestic violence is a major cause of death for women.
Out of 55,000 women, 93% were brutally killed by a current or former romantic lover.
For 12 years at the hands of her husband, Joel Steinberg, Heather Nussbaum went from quiet to book editor to notorious battered woman being blamed for her daughter's demise because she didn't get out soon enough.
With help from her diary, Heather not only survived this double abuse, but grew strong in the process and went on to become an advocate for other battered women.
Surviving.
Intimate terrorism.
By Heather Nussbaum. May 1978. Joel Steinberg. Mr. Right. People were always coming in and out of Joel's office at home. Clients, physicians, officers, criminals. They'd always invite us out to dinners, chats or pop.
Yeah, the new client of mine is really a representative of my old employer. Yes, the Defense Intelligence Agency. Which had in fact been his employer. And he's gonna get me involved in that spy stuff again.
Joel, that's not true. You shouldn't lie. Tell the truth.
Well, this kind of truth does no harm. I need to do it for business, to impress people. They need to see me as special if I want them to call on me to represent them.
You're so bright Joel. Surely you could think of a way to outsmart a doll.
Did you talk to your therapist lately?
Yes, why?
You need to talk to mine, because yours ain't working. You need to better yourself. Ask for a promotion.
And tonight after night.
Did you ask for that promotion yet?
No, I couldn't do it. A week later.
Did you ask for that promotion yet?
Um, no. A month later.
What?
I don't deserve a promotion. I got one last September.
What do you mean you don't deserve a promotion? Of course you do.
One night, he became angry with me. I followed him into my closet. He reached in and gave me my best dress.
You really don't know how to express your caring feelings. You gotta learn to say such things like you really mean them Heather. With passion. You really like this dress, don't you? Now look. I'm gonna rip it right down the middle if you don't tell me not to. And the way that shows you really mean it.
What?
Like you mean it.
Joel, I love that dress.
Come on, let me hear how you mean it.
Joel, don't rip it. Don't rip, Joel, don't rip.
Show me you care for it.
I, I, I love that dress. I want to keep it.
That's, uh... Not good enough.
Please Joel, don't rip the dress.
Now, try this again.
Joel convinced me to get a promotion, to be successful like him. I couldn't lose Joel. Not now that he's come to me so much to me. I love him. And then one day.
You know that little girl Donna, that no brace? She's dead.
Why won't you hold my hand? I feel so rejected.
I wanted children so badly.
Ever since dawn set, I felt an emptiness set me within the building. So, I'm related that you feel as strongly about this as I do. Marriage or no marriage. I was going to become pregnant with Joel's child. May 14, 1981. I'm a mom. I know every mother thinks their child is the best, but in this case it's really true. I'm gonna na... No. We're gonna name you Elizabeth. I'm gonna call you Lisa. I needed a lot of comfort. And my baby became my constant source of solace and peace. And Joel, he adored Lisa. I knew this because his abuse became more subtle, more slow. One night, he came back from a racquetball game in 10.
You did this to me!
What are you talking about?
I'll tell you what. I took off my shirt in front of a client and he said, "Joel, you look anorexic." I am a rhexic! Do you hear this hell?
Yes.
You deliberately done this to me. You starved me so that I get skinny and people assume it's from cocaine or something.
Joel, are you crazy?
Don't call me crazy!
I, I, I hated when you hit me Joel. It's embarrassing and it makes me feel like you don't love me and I, I know you do.
Of course I love you.
Joel, I worked that guy.
You don't have to tell them anything. It's your business, not any of theirs. Hate myself when I hit you. Hitting's not even me. I'm not even really like that.
August 23rd. I just want Joel to love me. It's hopeless. I, I'm hopeless. Joel repeatedly calls me three names. Liar. Whore. And pig. He insisted that I wear a sign around my neck labeled I am a pig.
Get down on the floor. Come on! Like the pig you are. Come on Piggy Piggy! Come on, come on! Get up! Get up pig! Move faster pig! Move faster pig!
I'm so miserable. I'm a piece of crap and I can't do anything right. I have to get out of here. A few days later, I told Joel of my plan and subsequent action. I'm leaving you. My father's on his way to pick me up.
You're not going anywhere. Go soak in the tub to take down the sweat.
Okay.
Willie, Heather's bit me in the bathroom right now. Do you mind taking Lisa out for some ice cream?
Um, Dad, I'm sorry for making you come so far, but I'm okay. I'm okay. I'm fine. November 1st. I know you guys are probably wondering why I'm still here, but I stayed for my daughter. Lisa loved going out with her dad. I couldn't take that.
Mommy? Mommy? Is Daddy gonna take me out tonight?
I don't know baby, ask your father.
Okay.
You shut up!
What did you do?
Get off the bed!
No, she's not moving.
She's not breathing!
I know, but.
Call 911!
The last thing I remember was a limp arm hanging off of the stretcher. Both Joel and I was escorted into separate police cars and was off to Midtown to be booked and questioned.
Um, Lisa was eating some carrots and she just stopped breathing. Right Heather?
You lousy lying loser. How dare you? Joel, every night I let you beat on me for Lisa. The private child of a normal childhood. Joel, she had to watch her life become what mine is. Every day you came home and you hit her. And you hit her and hit her! It was him!
He did this to our daughter?
Joel Steinberg was given maximum sentence for manslaughter. Child, slaughter. Eight to 25 years and I'm still here advocating for other women. I mean, that's why I wrote my book. You know, sometimes I can still hear Joel's voice.
Heather, I love you! I love you!
Shut up Joel.
I love you.
I loved you too. But I have to learn to love myself first.
Thank you Principal Brown and to the two students. And now we'll move on to the board chair's report. Good evening fellow board members, Superintendent Leon, staff, students, families and constituents. Thank you for giving of your time and. Thank you for giving of your time and joining us this evening. March is Women's History Month, and I take this opportunity to pay homage to all phenomenal women. To my fellow board members, staff members, parents, and all of the beautiful women in the audience, and those who hear the sound of my voice. Congratulations to all of us who work really hard on this board. I enjoy working with you ladies. You're welcome. Technology High School held their second annual Women's Empowerment Assembly held on Friday, March eighth, twenty nineteen. I was one of ten panelists. Female students had the opportunity to ask the panelists no-holds-barred questions. Topics included, what was the most difficult obstacle you faced in your career? I was honored to be on the panel with such distinguished women. In honor of Women's History Month, the district, in partnership with University Hospital, hosted a women's summit. Board member Norton and I attended. It was a standing room only. Our female parents, guardians, and caregivers were exposed to important health topics such as cardiovascular health, self-care, and mental health. So that they can care for themselves while they may be taking care of others. In some ways, this was the first of many for the participants. First time venturing into another part of Newark. First time visiting a hospital, and most importantly, the first time many of them had ever had a mammogram. It was a memorable experience. We are grateful for their partnership with University Hospital and look forward to future joint ventures that increases knowledge so that we may become more self-aware. Next year, we will need to reserve a larger room. Thank you to Margarita Muniz of Community Engagement and her team for the job well done. Last week, the Beta Alpha Omega Chapter and Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, in partnership with Dr. E. Alma Flag School, commemorated Dr. Flag's contributions by renaming the corner of Third Street in her honor. A trailblazer in education, Dr. E. Alma Flag's career in the Newark Public School System spanned over forty years. She was a teacher of mathematics, a remedial reading teacher, vice principal, principal, and assistant superintendent before retiring in nineteen eighty-three. In nineteen sixty-four, Dr. Flag was appointed as principal of the Integrated Hawkins Street School, becoming the first African-American woman to hold that distinction. Her appointment as Assistant Superintendent in Charge of Curriculum Services in nineteen sixty-seven was another milestone achievement. Dr. Flag was recognized as being among the Hundred Most Influential People in New Jersey by the City News in nineteen sixty-six. In nineteen sixty-eight, the New Jersey Performing Arts Center recognized Dr. Flag in their annual Kwanzaa Recognition of Newark Elders. The naming of the Newark Public School in her honor occurred in nineteen eighty-five. Dr. Flag honored three, authored three poetry books, Twenty-One Poems, Feelings, Lines, and Color of Twenty More with Thought and Feelings. Dr. Flag was one of Newark's best and one of our very own. On March night, the district hosted the March, I'm sorry, on March night, the district hosted the Robotics Madness Competition held at First Avenue School. Students from seventeen schools across the district participated. Board member Padilla and I attended. There were three levels of competition, high school, middle school, and elementary school. And also, in the first Lego League, the following awards were distributed. Robot Design, First Avenue, George Washington Carver, and Oliver Street received the judges' award. Research, Wilson Avenue won first place, and Speedway Academies received the judges' award. Robotic Mission Completion went to Sussex Avenue School, who won first place, and Ann Street School received the judges' award. Overall Champion, Ann Street first place, and Ridge Street received the judges' award. Tim Nagler, who organized the event, said, "I want to thank the district and the school leadership for continuing to support these academic programs our students have really embraced." Watching the students enjoy, learn, collaborate, and grow through these programs is one of many great things happening in the district, and we look forward to the bright future for all these teams, students, and engineers. On March fourteenth, the Essex County School Boards Association celebrated the unsung heroines and heroes. This recognition honors high school seniors who make outstanding contributions to their schools and communities, but are often overlooked by traditional student recognition. I am pleased to say that this year, principals and board members nominated fourteen students. That's one senior from each of our high schools. We are so very proud of all of you. We encourage you to continue doing great work that advances your schools, peers, and community. The event was well-attended by their relatives and district staff. Now that we have the momentum, we will be nominating fourteen students each year. Superintendent Leon has been sharing information around the strategic plan. It started with roundtables. There were nine focus groups that met three times each between February and March, resulting in at least twenty-seven meetings. The next phase is sharing the work that came out of the groups with a larger community for additional input. To provide the community with an opportunity to contribute, six community meetings that have been scheduled. The first two meetings took place last week, one at Barringer High School, and Wednesday, on Wednesday evening, and the other one at Central High School, which was last Thursday. The remaining four meetings are as follows. Tuesday, April second, at East Side High School. Translators will be available to anyone who needs it. Wednesday, April third, at Malcolm X Shabazz. Tuesday, April ninth, at Weekway, and finally, Wednesday, April tenth, at West Side. All meetings scheduled between six P M. to eight P M. These community meetings will lead up to a report out to the superintendent at NJIT on Wednesday, May first, also between the hours of six P M. to eight P M. This is your opportunity to shape what happens in our district. Let your voice be heard. Make it a priority to attend at least one of these meetings. We encourage you, and we need your support to continue these meetings. The information is also on the district's website. Please remember, it takes a village to raise a child. March is also Arts in the Schools Month, so we celebrate art partners and community leaders collaborating through art. There have been many performances around the district, and there is still a chance to catch a performance at the Newark Board of Education All-City Dance Performance tomorrow at Arts High School, where eleven of our schools will be participating. The event will be held between five P M. to six P M., which means you still have time to make our budget hearing. The budget hearing is scheduled tomorrow, March twenty-seventh, at Science Park High School. The meeting begins promptly at six P M. This is an important meeting because this is the first time that residents will be voting on the school budget. At the meeting, our SBA Ms. Wilson will be sharing important information that will help you make an informed decision when you go out and vote on April sixteen. There are copies of the budget fact sheet created by the Newark Trust for Education on the information table outside. Please make sure you grab a flat handout. We appreciate our partnership with the Newark Trust and their efforts to make sure everyone is informed. Newark Enroll's application window closed on April fifteenth. Match letters will be available at the school on April fifteenth and available for pickup on April sixteenth. The family portal opens on April twenty-ninth for any family who missed the enrollment window or who would like to choose a different school for their children. You may have heard the superintendent say at the business meeting, only sixteen students in transition grades did not complete that application, and that is great news. Uh, please don't forget, election day reminder, as you know, on April sixteenth is the most important election, which is our school board election. Where voters will go out to the polls to cast their vote for our school budget and decide their choice for school board members. It will be the first time in more than twenty years that residents will vote on the district's budget. We encourage you to go out to the polls, bring a friend, and have a friend bring a friend, and that concludes our MICE Chair Report, and now we'll hand it on to Superintendent Leon for the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and everyone who is here in attendance. NPS Clarity 2020 is a one-year strategic plan that's designed to help us assess the entire twenty-three years understate operation. It is a one-year, as we bring to close the three-year strategic plan that we have been living for the last three years. That ends in June, and this June, we will actually launch the one-year strategic plan. It is designed to build into the next decade, the twenty-twenty, twenty-thirty strategic plan, which is this city's first ever, and perhaps this state's only, a ten-year strategic plan, which is designed to actually create a different ecosystem here in our city of Newark, redefining every aspect of our organization. And obviously, it will take time. You have already heard from our board chair that there are roundtables that have been occurring during the course of this entire last three months. Those roundtables have been spearheaded by nine co-conveners, members of the community, as well as district staff, who are in fact responsible for leading the conversations that have in fact been occurring. On the first of May, they will report to me, and the location of that meeting is Rutgers University Newark Campus, not NJIT. They will report out information as it relates to all of the learning that they have undergone. The facilities needs assessment that we are currently completing, as well as a number of other needs assessments that have been occurring since my start. I would also want everyone to know that our objective is to launch it in June, and then for, during the time period of the next academic year, be able to share with the community the ten-year strategic plan in redefining and redesigning our school system. Surveys. We have been completing surveys as a result of the efforts that are before us. We have over four thousand two hundred responses from parents who have completed our surveys. From staff, we have almost every single instructional staff member who has completed the survey. Remember, we have three thousand members in NTU. That involves teachers, teacher aides. We obviously have principals in our school district. We have almost three thousand staff members on the instructional side of the organization who have completed these surveys. In the history of this school district, every time that we've asked parents to complete surveys, the number that we have just completed is the largest ever. Anytime we've asked staff members to complete surveys, this in fact has been the largest number ever. And then I'm proud to announce that from students in grades six through twelve, we had students complete surveys. We have currently, right now, a little under seventeen thousand surveys from students in our school district in grades six through twelve. This in fact is the most incredible number of responses that we have, and I want to take this opportunity to recognize obviously, all of the staff members for completing these surveys, all of the parents who took the time to in fact complete these surveys, and every single one of the students that are in our schools from grade six through twelve that actually completed the survey. We want to give them all a big round of applause. Now, it's extremely important to say that, you know, so you complete the survey, and the objective is for people to be honest. For people to say, "This is what's wrong." You know, all I have to do is look at our student attendance from last year, eighty-six percent. Look at our student achievement data across our schools to know that there's a lot of work that needs to be done. We need to do a far better job at educating and preparing our students. And one of the ways that we do that is by actually being honest and open about the work that we need to do. And I want to thank anyone who's in this room who's actually completed that. I also want to take this opportunity to say that these surveys are in fact anonymous. In the agreement with the organization that's doing this, I do not want to know, nor does any one of my staff members is allowed to know, you know, who completed it. All we are told is, what are the numbers by school as it relates to student completion? That's all that we know. In terms of the number of staff members, you know, we know who we sent it to, but we do not know who completed. So I share all that to say that by the end of this week, we are asking any staff member, any parent, any student who has not completed the survey, that you have a couple of more days to actually complete that task. And we look forward to doing something that has never been done before. So we complete a survey, we find out what the results are, we know that it's saying that we're doing something that needs to be done better, and then we decide not to share that. That's not how this administration works. You know, we will obviously take the information as it's presented to us. We will share it so that we can be better. I'll be the first to say that everyone in this administration is gonna work harder to be better so that our students get the very, very best as our parents are expecting nothing less than that from us. So let us look at what's the work ahead. There's a lot of work ahead. As it relates to attendance. As it relates to attendance, hopefully, everyone has remembered that one of the things that I did at my start in August is when the principals return on August one, and when all of the administrators return on August thirteenth, and then when all of the staff return on August twenty-eighth, and then when all of the students, cuz I met with all of the students, seniors, juniors, sophomores, freshmen, and eighth graders, I told everybody that our student achievement data, our attendance data from last year was eighty-six percent. That means that if everyone in this room right now was a student in the Newark schools, we would each have thirty-six absences. We already know from the research out of Chicago that being absent ten percent of the school a year is a recipe for being a potential dropout from high school. And we know that our students can be far better. I have been reporting that every month, our average daily attendance has been above ninety percent since this start of this administration in July. You know, why is that happening? Well, we did assign five students to every staff member, and we did ask every staff member in the schools to call five students. We want to make sure the students were aware of the first day of school and understand the importance of being to school and to school on time. Why is this attendance a whole lot better? Because you know what? We have what people don't like to write about, and that is that teachers in Newark actually care. They actually do a really, really good job. And so, by actually having our teachers doing what they're supposed to do, I will say this, there's nobody perfect on this dais, and there's nobody perfect in every single one of our schools. We can all work hard to be a whole lot better, and our children deserve us to do that. But our teaching staff members have been working really hard as a collective unit to make sure that parents are aware of, and are on top of their respective students. So I'm proud of our staff members. You know what? I'm proud of our parents because our parents are making sure that the students are actually coming to school, that if they are late, that they're being called, "Hey, my child's gonna be late, so don't call me with that robo-call," or, in fact, "My child is absent and there's a note that says that my child was late or absent from school." So parents are demonstrating that they are doing a very important job, so I want to thank them for that. But then, you know what? The secret weapon of it all are the students of this great city. Our students understand that our adults need to be a whole lot better for them, and making sure that they're coming to school and putting pressure on the people that need to get the work done is obviously extremely important. So I'm proud of all of the students, in particular, all of the students that are, were recognized and are in this auditorium actually right now. So as it relates to the month of February, I've been following the same pattern ever since August. In August, I shared last school year's attendance data. In September, in October, I shared September's data. In November, I shared October's data. So this is March, which means I'm sharing February's data. There were only three dates. Out of a total, all of the days that we have been in session this year, the number of days where we are below ninety percent has been significantly the lowest ever. Three of the dates were this year. When were they? Well, we know that the weather was sporadic during this time period, so sometimes students are waiting at home. Hey, there is no school one day. Is there school the next day? So what we're gonna make sure to do is whenever a school is not in session, the morning, the next morning, we will make a call to everyone's home saying, "Guess what? There wasn't school yesterday, but there's school today." Because we need the students to understand that they have to be in school and to school on time every day. The days after holidays, it appears as though some students believe that when there's a holiday, the next day is just another day absent from school. So we are noticing a pattern as it relates to that. So we are noticing a pattern as it relates to that, and we need to make sure that our parents are aware that the students must be to school, they must be to school on time, and that being absent on the end of a holiday or a vacation is not a day to be absent from school. Next line. So one of the things that I did is I looked at every single transcript of all of the seniors. It's something that I did when I was the assistant superintendent of high schools. I reviewed 2,491 transcripts. When I was assistant superintendent of the high schools, I did all of them by myself. So I've learned over time that there needs to be people who understand what they're supposed to do. So I've had a number of staff members who have assisted in the review. Then I did a meeting with all of the vice principals in charge of scheduling and the school counselors, and we met with regards to what needed to occur, and we designed a plan for every single one of the students that were seniors that were not ready to graduate. For those of you who recall, when I did this report in October, the number of students that were not going to graduate was almost 500 students. 500 seniors. They have been in high school for four years, and they were not ready to graduate. They were not meeting the academic requirements, not because of attendance, it was because either their credits were not correct, or they were not meeting the testing requirements. As it relates to those students that were not meeting the credit requirement, that seniors, class of 2019, from 500 students approximately that were off track, today we have only 107 of those students off track. Now, I'm not proud of the fact that there are 107 that are off track, you know? This is one of the reasons why if you're off track by the end of the year, you get the summer to be on track. So when people report that, you know, there are people in this district who do not understand the importance of August graduates, please understand that this superintendent is clear on what our compliance responsibilities. And so our students and their respective graduation rates did not occur properly, not because somebody in the new administration didn't do what they were supposed to do. In fact, my administration does know what it's supposed to do. And ultimately, one of the issues that we have is a serious problem in this school district where people were providing guidance without having the necessary certification to actually provide the guidance. As it relates to that, if you look at the class of 2020, those are our juniors. The class of 2021, those are our sophomores. Currently right now, there's over 4,500 students in those grades, and we have approximately 1,000 of all of those students that are currently right now in our schools, that are juniors and sophomores, that as of today, they can't graduate, even if they had good grades the following years. So think for this for a moment. All of the students that are in our schools right now who are juniors and sophomores, if they were to get good grades this year and next year, they would still not be able to graduate because they have errors that need to be in fact corrected, or they have courses that they have to make up. Look at the freshman class. They arrived new. They were in eighth grade in an elementary school, and now they're in our high school. Of the 2,362 freshmen in our schools, the school year hasn't even finished. We have 1,068 that will not be able to graduate by their senior year because they're off track right now. So now watch this. Look at the number of out-of-sequence courses for those freshmen. There are zero. There are budget implications that will be addressed to help solve this problem for the freshman class, so that when they go into their sophomore year, whatever is behind is caught up. When do you schedule students? Well, just so that people understand, you do not schedule students in the year that they're in. You schedule students the year before so that when they are in their year, the class is already in session, just so that we're clear. Because we don't need someone to accidentally misinterpret that, well, schedules were done during this administration. So schedules were done in the spring of last year for this year. There are course corrections that are supposed to occur during the summer, and that ultimately you create changes to schedules at that time. So in not changing any of the district's policies, what you have are students who are not being prepared to graduate from high school. So to the eighth graders that are there, and to the parents of eighth graders, we are changing the entire landscape of not only this school system, but of every single high schools, in particular, the comprehensive high schools. We are redefining them by academies, and I will share this with you. All of the students that are in eighth grade, who will be attending high schools in this city, will have the cleanest schedules that we have ever provided for our incoming freshmen. They're being reminded now that when they get their letters of acceptance to high school, that I'm requiring every parent with their child to come to high school this year in May. If you are a parent of an eighth grader, once you receive your acceptance letter, your match letter, on April 15, you will be required to report to school in May of the high school that your child will be attending next year, so that we handle all of the scheduling questions and issues, so that you get an understanding of what it is that is required of your child in our high schools that is new, and that you understand the importance of what that schedule looks like the first day. All of the students, regardless of grades in high school, will be required to return to school the last week of August on a designated date to get their actual schedules, so that when they arrive to school on the first day of school, they actually know where they're going and actually have a schedule that's going to help them accomplish all of their In terms of dreams, you know, we have a strategic plan that is going to take a lot of work, just in looking at the people in the audience, you know, from parents who care to staff members who are of our very, very best. And while we're making dramatic changes that are going to change what people understand this city looks like, I have to share with you that we don't have time to wait. So Verizon has just completed the honoring of this Innovative Learning Schools grant. We were not allowed to share this information with anyone until today. The meeting was held this morning with leaders from Verizon and the three participating schools. This is a $3.6 million grant, where three of our Newark elementary schools will in fact partner with 100 schools that are actually doing this right now. iPads in the coming days will be issued to every single student in the three schools that I'm about to mention, grades six, seven, and eight. They will be allowed to keep them, they will have access to use them at home. When we sign off on these documents, the parents and the student will in fact have that iPad for that child's use at home, free of charge, something that will be used in our classrooms, but our students will actually be able to keep them at home as well. And the three schools are... And I understand that we have a whole lot of schools that could benefit from this. So it's three. And, you know, the process to select was interesting, I will tell you that upfront. So when you start making your little comments, not supposed to be yelling from the seats, not that I'm hearing you yell, but I just want to make it clear, Roger Leon was not in the process of making any of the selections, but you might think I'm not telling you the truth. So Hawkins Street School, okay? Wait, 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 wait. Hawkins Street School is a school in the East Ward, but it never gets the attention it's about to get. Okay? That's higher court projects in the house, okay? Going to the North Ward now, you with me? Yes. Okay? Dr. William H. Horton School. Well, I, yeah, it's, we call it in the north, though. And then heading to the South. Ready? Hawthorne Avenue School. People don't come to meetings for months and then they start asking for stuff. March is perfect attendance month, so it's extremely important that we are in school and school on time. Tomorrow is a very important budget hearing, we need you to be in attendance, we need you to log on our district's web and see the actual budget presentation if for some reason you're not able to attend. April is Autism Awareness Month, and we take this opportunity to let you know that we have a number of incredible activities occurring in the district. April 15 is the date that the match letters go out. April 16 is Election Day here for our school board. There'll be three seats for candidates to the board, and the most important question that we have asked our residents, and that is, we need people to vote yes on the ballot question. Voting yes on the ballot question affords and provides all of the students in the city of Newark all of the necessary resources to accomplish all of the goals that we actually have before us. May has a number of incredible events, as well as the month of June as we bring about closure to our actual school year. I end with this important note, that the members of this board, as the list that I have, we're correct on the numbers? You would like to announce them? So listen carefully, as Nancy Deering will provide some very important information, just so that I, I had six, but we want the information to be accurate. Ms. Deering?
Tave Padilla.
You please stand.
Leah Owens.
Please stand.
Floeisha Hill.
Ms. Hill, please stand.
Josephine Garcia.
Madam President, please stand.
Reginald Bledsoe.
Mr. Bledsoe, please stand. Ms. Deering, please explain why they're standing.
So the members of the board continue their education in finance, governance, in student achievement, and have been recognized by the NJSBA and are going to be recognized as new board member certification. They will be honored at a reception on May 9 in, at the Glen Ridge Country Club.
Madam President, that ends the superintendent's report.
Now for the public participation portion of the meeting. Public participation at board meetings is intended to allow individual members of the public the opportunity to address the board and administration on issues of public concern and not as a forum for two-way dialogue with board members. The superintendent or his designee or the board chair may respond to questions either at the end of the public participation session, or responses may be provided at a later time. Public participation at this meeting will be limited to 90 minutes. This time allotment may be extended for an additional 15 minutes by the board chair at her discretion. All speakers, regardless of whether he or she represents an organization, will be allotted no more than three minutes for comment unless an exception applies. This time limit for all speakers will be adhered to. There will be no sharing or granting of speaking time to others. Speakers must be present when their name is called. All speakers will be required to give their names and addresses. The public participation portion of the meeting, as I said, will be limited to 90 minutes. Examples of unacceptable behavior that will not be permitted include, but are not limited to naming district employees and engaging in personal attacks, racial slurs, excessive loudness, calling out, yelling, generally disruptive behavior, attempting to disrupt the meeting, or inciting others to do so. The superintendent or board chair may interrupt any speaker or terminate any individual's speaking privilege if the speaker's comments are disruptive or obscene. An individual may be cautioned that a personally directed statement may be slanderous or defaming, and that the individual may be liable for his or her statements. Attempts to hijack or filibuster the meeting, repeated interrupting or badgering the board chair or district officials, repetitive or truculent speech, or other disregard for the rules of decorum will not be tolerated and may subject the individual or group to removal from the meeting. If necessary, the board meeting will be adjourned.
Thank you, Ms. List. Thank you, Ms. List. First speaker, we have Poppy Roberts. Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you so much, Mr. Roberts. School?
How you doing? My name is Poppy Roberts, and I attend the Social Justice and Democracy School of American High School. I am here today to address the conflict that I have been dealing with for a couple of months, months now. Myself and a majority of students at American History wrote a petition against the athletic director in our school, Mr. Travazquez. It documented his abuse of power and manipulation of my teammates and the removal of my father, a youth organizer for our program and our community. We believe Mr. Travazquez had a major impact derailing our basketball season and athletic careers. I tried, we tried to submit our petition to the superintendent, but he told me he would handle it. What actually happened, what, what he did actually was give Travazquez days and months to write false reports and complaints against my father. Travazquez completed the task he set out to accomplish, which was removing my father from us and the children he organized. What has been the result when it comes to grades, attendance, and our understanding of the world we inherit, which was his task for the, for our program and for the community? That's it.
Thank you, student Roberts.
Good evening. My name is Patience Lewis from American History High School. I'm here with my family in regards to, I'm here, I'm here with my family in regards of the problems that have, that have been happening in my environment. A man named Jeff, Jeff Travazquez, who I believe is a racist and a menace to our school system, has been tormenting my peers, family, and even faculty members. With him in my school environment makes me feel threatened and unsafe in school. For the past two years, I've been practicing and worked, and have been working on playing basketball for my ninth grade year. Schools like Weekway and University High School coaches told me that I was allowed to come and try out and play for their team. This year, I was told by Mr. Jeff, Jeff Travazquez that I couldn't play for any other school other than Bar. I believe that he wouldn't allow me to play for any other, anyone else except for Bar because he is the coach of this school. Due to the fact that I wasn't allowed to play basketball this year, I have lost the passion for playing this sport. How can a man who doesn't even live in the district of this, of this, how can a man who doesn't even live in the district have this much power and control over us? I believe that he is only here for a paycheck, and he does not care about the students in my school. The little things like this should be questioned, so I come to you, the leaders of our school system, to ask for a change that we all need.
Thank you, student Lewis. Next speaker, Trey Manisha Moore-Lemay. Next speaker, Shane Fuller. Next speaker, Denise Cole. Next speaker, Kathleen Witcher.
Kathleen Witcher, the South Side, Malcolm X. Chabas High School.
Kathleen Witcher, the South Side Malcolm X Shabazz High School Alumni Association, 80 Johnson Avenue. I want to say first, we had an incredible amount of capital work being done at the building. It's still ongoing, and the leaks we had for over 40 years are now being repaired. Also want to ask that, since we no longer have the name of the school on the building, that we get signature. The old, 40-year-old sign was painted by students and Mr. Johnson, the art teacher, and over time, it's faded away, so we do need signature on the building. We also want to thank NPS staff for their work renovating the Culinary Arts Lab. We have the new cosmetology lab. We also have videography, but to add, this is the first time we had a math lab. Still begging though, I know I approached the superintendent and I went beyond to the commissioner. Commissioner Repellet said it costs too much, but I'd like to see if we could get autotech back online, because many students came through the school for many, many years, at least 25 years, learning to be auto mechanics, a career for them. Also wanted to add, we are proud to say that we may be going to 3D because Apple is coming. We're also going to have the Jewish Renaissance Family Clinic back, it's much needed. We also want to say that the biochem students, who are seldom recognized or acknowledged, will be going again to the national competition this spring, and we know they're going to come out winners. Just want to conclude by saying that some of our staff have complained as alumni and others, that one Newark has not served us proudly. We need more students who are willing to come to learn, rather than those students who are on their way to other negative endeavors. And last, want to say that I've just returned from the State PTA Convention, and we can be proud because two schools have earned a special recognition. The first one, in the area of Hispanic and Latino work with families, 13th Avenue School PTA was recognized. And the second, my own Malcolm X Shabazz High School earned this year's STEM grant, so we are pleased. Thank you.
We had a student that registered, and I just received the name, so I'm going to allow the student to speak. Oku Erwoki?
Good afternoon, my name is Oku.
My name is Joyce.
And my name is God.
Um, we are proud to announce that we have Blue Devils at Central High. Big Blue?
Big Blue!
And we have been under the leadership of Dr. Sharnay Brown, and we are also on the Dental Academy, which is the only one in NPS, under the leadership of Vice Principal, Ms. Montgomery, and our teachers, Mrs. Annette Mucha and Mrs. Sylvia Bryson. The Dental Academy has an actual dental lab where students learn everything from sterilization to treating patients and making models. We learn everything. We belong to this organization called HOSA. HOSA stands for Health Organization Students of America. It's a leadership organization competition for students interested in the medical field. And we won third place within the state of New Jersey, over 300 schools. And we're going to be competing internationally on June 19th in Orlando, Florida. And we, we haven't really been anywhere outside of NJ of all the years that we lived here, so it's, it's a great opportunity for us. And we need your emotional support and your financial support so that we can go and bring back the gold for Newark Public Schools. Because we know the flights are going to be covered, we know the registration fees are going to be covered, so, you know, there might be some things that, you know, aren't covered, so, you know, some financial support, you know, all of that. And if you have a chance, go to our Central School website and watch our PSA that made us get to third place in the U, the whole NJ. Finally, we want to take this opportunity to thank three people. Dr. Brown, who has shown our support in a variety of ways to us, to us as individuals, and Ms. Montgomery, head of the Dental Academy, and Mr. Leon, our superintendent. Mr. Leon, clearly we all know that you are the driving force in our district, and are leading it, but we want to thank you personally for letting us understand that, first and foremost, you are an educator. That you are an educator.
Go ahead, you can finish. I want to hear it. I want to hear it.
That first and foremost, you are an educator who understands that being responsive to us students who emailed you by emailing us back means a lot for us. So for that, we thank you. Good evening, and thank you for your time.
Congratulations, Oku. And best of luck at the HOSA competition. Don't forget the board next time. Next speaker, Christopher Kanek.
Hi, my name is Chris Kanek, 155 Berkeley Avenue. This is Central High School, where I work. It's glad, I'm glad to see you here. I have to admit, the last time you had a board meeting here, I was making parent phone calls and putting in grades late into the night, and didn't even realize until I saw people leaving outside that I had missed the meeting. So, little embarrassing, but not too bad. I want to start off by saying how proud I am of the three young ladies who were just up here, as well as the other members of their team. Their team has two advisors, not one, which makes it a little different from some other academically focused organizations in the district. It's very important to both those students and to the faculty members that equity be duly doled out when it comes to inclusion in those activities. I know that sometimes, all we can afford is the bare minimum, but if possible, it would mean an awful lot to Central High School if all of the team members, including the two or three who don't typically compete, they're considered the backup members, but are required to know just as much and to work just as hard, if they could go as well. Additionally, we have two faculty advisors, and from what I heard, it was possible that the budget may only include one of them getting to go. And that, to me, would be quite the travesty. So I hope that we can find the money to get them down there. I'll do whatever I can, I'm not sure how much that is, but I hope that the board will do the same. Additionally, I want to say that some of the issues in my own classroom, that I've talked about many times at this microphone, are starting to get worked out. I've had Ms. Granato be messaging me after school hours, trying to follow up and find out what's going on, and just follow through. Dr. Brown herself has committed to teaching, or co-teaching, I should say, one of my classes with me, that is one of our biggest challenges. So I think that's a great undertaking, and it's going to really mean that she's leading by example. At the very least, I think she's going to learn even more about math, which I know is not her favorite topic, but with the budget meeting coming up, I know that everyone needs a refresher. I urge all of the community, every NTU member, and everyone who is in this room right now, to please, 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 watch the budget meeting. The Alliance for Public Schools, as well as many other organizations in the district, are paying very careful attention to this year's budget hearings and votes. I hope that, as a community that has been sundered so stupendously by the state, we can come together and find a budget that works for us. Thank you.
Next speaker, Dora Barnes. Next speaker, Thomas Ibiang.
Hey, good evening. I've known Roger for a minute. I've known him for the last 10 years since I've been coming through here fighting for our children in the community. I remember I used to be running through the aisles screaming, "Cammy, gotta go." Running all the way up to the stage screaming, "Cammy, gotta go," when we had Fight for Local Control. Roger used to be looking at me like, "Come on, get her, Africa, get her, Africa." Like when I walked past, when the, when the, when the security was dragging me out, you like, "Don't give up the fight." And I thought, in my, in the back of my mind, like, "Yo, this is a good guy right here. Roger, a good guy, like, he really with the people." So, um, when I saw Roger at, I think the mayor's ball over the summertime, he came to me like, "Yo, you won't believe this, Africa." He came to me impatient. "Yo, they done F'd up and let me in." I was looking at, "Let you in what, Roger? Let you in what? I'm about to be the superintendent." I'm looking at Roger like, "Yo, that's what's up." He was like, "Yo, I know the good work you and Patience been doing in the community, I got y'all. When I get in there, whatever y'all need, y'all program, I got y'all." So we set up a meeting to come meet before school opened, and I told Roger I wanted to continue my program, the program I've been doing for 10 years in the city, at American History. I told him, I hope he leave the coach there, all, me and the coach had a conversation. I just wanted to come and bring my program, a wraparound service for the kids in the community, to help them navigate this space. I wanted to bring it down there. He told me, "Go ahead." He even told me that meeting, because Roger was a good guy. You know, like, "Africa, if you need any money, we gonna find some funds, and we gonna get you some funds." I never asked him for money, he never gave me any money. I went to the school, I started my after-school program. First, I took this, I brought the kids to school in the morning, about, I picked all of them up around seven o'clock, no, no, six o'clock. Got to the school at seven, they worked out playing basketball for an hour, and then they all went to school. The reason I did that was for their attendance. Every single kid on that basketball team had a 98% attendance. Every day after school, I had an after-school program. Every single one of those kids, on, what you call it, we're on the honor roll, at the end of the first cycle, with a 3.5 GPA for the whole basketball team. I did this for no pay, my family did this on a daily basis. While we was doing that, Jeff Travazquez was sending texts and emails to the head coach of the basketball team, telling him I shouldn't be around the kids, that he would make him remove me from the kids. The head coach sent me all the texts and said, "Look, he's been harassing me since the summertime, telling me if your son don't play with him, I'm going to get rid of you from this school, you won't be around these kids." Remember, I'm working for free, he gets paid, he doesn't even live here. I forwarded all these messages, and I wrote an email and a complaint to the principal, to Santos, to Veltre, and I sent one to Roger, and some of the board members, and the councilman. This was months ago. They still, he came and had a meeting with, with me, the principal, the head coach, Veltre, and the athletic director. He emasculated, the principal told him he had no power over Travazquez. He told the head coach he had no power over Travazquez, he would get fired if he didn't watch what he was saying. They got afraid, and they stopped writing complaints. The head coach submitted a complaint against Travazquez putting his hand in his pocket and sticking a pin to his neck on camera. Nothing was done. Yo, to, to that point, I thought he was a good person. But like, it's proven, if you support white supremacists, if you cuddle them, if you could cuddle white supremacist behavior, you condone it, you are part of it. I came here to give my testimony. I gave here to give my testimony. I'm going to fight this till the day I can breathe. Local control, and for the people, for the people is just not for the people saying it. You need to work for the people of this community. I got it out, now that I'm done. Patience, come up and come talk, Patience. Y'all work for us, we don't work for you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
You're not welcome. Take care of the white supremacists, then you tell me thank you.
Patience?
Don't tell people you care about us, you don't care about the community.
Hi, good, hi, good evening. My name is Patience Roberts. I am a parent and a product of Newark Public Schools.
Ms. Roberts, can you state your name and address for the record? Thank you.
Patience Roberts, 175 First Street.
Thank you.
Um, I am here to talk about Mr. Jeff Travazquez, as you heard. He is a white supremacist that works in our school system. Complaints, verbal and written, were given to the administration at the high school and the superintendent himself. Of course, our complaint was ignored. I won't go over all the things that Travazquez did, because the super has our complaint, and he, and he can share with the board. What I will say is that there is no place for Jeff Travazquez or those like him. I'm pretty sure the gentleman at Science Park High School is not a loner. Racism is prevalent in NPS, and you're probably just not hearing about it, it's because nobody does anything about it. We've been fighting regarding this guy, Jeff Travazquez, for the whole school year, and still nothing has been done. There must be an environment that makes them comfortable to say the things and do the things they do. And I would not think that an NPS would foster such an environment. Me, my family, my children, like my husband says, is going to fight until we have no breath in us. Somebody has to pay. Somebody has to be held accountable.
Thank you, Ms. Patience. Next speaker, Julissa Vasquez.
Good evening, Julissa Vasquez, Littleton Avenue. I want to thank then, Technology High School, the vice principal, for nominating my son for an awesome award. Mr. Roger was there that day. Then I nominated nine students from nine high schools in Newark, so I'm very proud of that. My son dedicates his time at Technology High School. He does weekends, he's, that's his world, that's his senior year, and I don't know what he's going to do when he graduates, because he's like, "Mom, I love being in the school." That's his passion. He makes it every day on time. I don't even have to wake him up. He's like, "I love being there." And whatever Mr. Rogers is doing there, he does an excellent job with those students. That school is run the proper way. Now, on the other hand, Barringer High School, we need to get rid of that principal. And I say that because she contradict everything that parents, if you go and try to have a conversation with her, she's very rude. Then, if the parent doesn't speak English, the communication, you know, is lost. So she don't want to even deal with that situation. There's kinds, every time, I, I have two kids that go to Barringer. Every time that I go there, you have parents that are constantly there for an issue. Just last week, my son had his red jacket, and it was drizzling, and they removed it. He came back outside like, "Woof." And I said, "What happened to you?" He's like, "Oh, they told me I gotta take off my jacket, or I can't walk in." I don't understand. What, if you in full uniform, I do not understand what's the problem with the jacket. As soon as you go in, you're going to remove it to put it in your locker. And then yesterday, I received a call from my daughter at 2:25, that they came all out of school, something about that that was a bomb threat at Barringer High School. But meanwhile, no teachers, they didn't have no clue what was going on. Supposedly, it was the drill, but half the school already had walked out and left home. And I didn't receive no phone call about it. They're going to wait like September, three days later, and notify the parents with a school note. I'm telling you, we need a new principal at Barringer High School. She needs to go, she needs, she needs to learn what Mr. Rogers is doing at Technology, at Science, at Arts, from other principals, because she's not running that school the correct way. Plus, she's racist, let me tell you that. She is racist. And I know, because I sat there with parents and be like, "I cannot deal with this principal." So we need to do something about her, and we need to do, get more phonics on these schools. When I was growing up, first grade, there was kids that were using phonics. There's no more phonics books in the schools. These kids, before they get to fourth grade, they don't know how to read and write. These kids, before they get to fourth grade, they don't know how to read and write. We need to put phonics back in our schools.
Ms. Vasquez, your time is up. Inaceli Tubileja. Next speaker, Lucius Jones.
Ms. Garcia, you ready?
We are ready, Mr. Jones.
Lucius Jones, 224 Richard Lutares. It's been a while since I've been at the board meetings, and some folks say, "Where has he been?" You know, sometimes God has a say, a way of saying things to you, like, "Take a break." Especially when your house catch on fire, and you're out of your house for a year. You have a lot of time to meditate and think about your priorities. Sometimes, your family has to become your priority. Circumstances is, and you get a little deeper, and you say, "You know what? I'm strong enough to come back out again." Then, all of a sudden, you know, my daughter, she loves school. Of course, when the superintendent says, "Oh, the school is gonna open on Mar- March 1st," she tells me, "Get up, clean the snow off the car, and, uh, before she can get ready to go to school." Texting, so I get up, go out there. No, I ain't got no business out that side. I couldn't clean off nobody's car. Bam! I'm on the ground with a broken shoulder. And you know what? I'm looking up at the sky, and I can't get up, and I'm hollering at my wife, I'm hollering at the neighbor, and you begin to understand something, that life is real. Because it felt like 1,200 board meetings when you laying on that ground. Life is really, really serious. I say to everyone here today that, as we come here, and we move, and we look at this thing called local control, and we think about what it really means, what it means for kids, what it means for Newark. I just don't look at Newark. It's a new arc. It's a new day. It's a new opportunity to say, "We're gonna do what we need to do to support kids." And how are we gonna do what we're gonna do to support kids? I absolutely love the motivation of the superintendent, and the ingenuity, and the fact that I know he's for kids. I've sat on boards with him. I know he's for kids. I also see, sit back and watch how the board kind of doing its business. Because we need you to do your business and help establish policy. And although I've been away for a while, I'm happy to be back in the game with one arm, with one eye. It doesn't make a difference, because a lot of times, I'm in the supermarkets, and people say to me, "Oh, isn't that the blind advocate?" But if I'm so blind, why is it I'm the only one can see that there are kids getting shot on South One J Avenue, murdered while they eating their Chinese food? Why am I the only one can see the type of tragedies that our kids are going through? It is dangerous outside these doors. Extremely, extremely dangerous. Our kids got more guns in their hands than they have pens and pencils. And they're watching us. Not only watching us, they're watching what they see on TV. They don't know the difference between what they see on TV and what they see at the movie, and what they go out there, and what they, what they do playing these games, where they just start the game over again, the same character pops back up again. They realize that when they pull the trigger, they're actually killing two families' lives. The one that pulled the trigger, and the one that's in the ground. We have a lot at stake here. A lot, a lot at stake. Because while we sit here and play games, New York moves into Newark. And they moving to Newark heavy. You can walk up and down the streets, and you can see, you can see the changes in the neighborhood. They're moving here. The governor of New York has put something together called SOTO. Well, they'll pay one year's rent to somebody moving from New York to Newark. So, I'm gonna close with this. This is no game for me. This is a serious, serious thing. I've dedicated my life to the work and the efforts of ensuring that our kids get their just due. This is the last stand for education. It's not just about equal rights, all right? It's not about just about saying, you know, "We can do equal, equal opportunity." It's an opportunity for us as a people to do better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next speaker, Shannon Coleman. Next speaker, Yolanda Johnson.
Yolanda Johnson, 765 Broad Street. So, I want to thank everybody else that came before me, because they kinda got me revved up for what I was about to say on tonight. Um, Roger, I love you, but, um, we have to do better. And I think you mentioned that earlier, that we have a lot of, lot of work to do. But we also talked about engaging the parents. You, you guys have to understand, and some of the things that's coming out is things that I have already said, come into this mic over and over and over and over again. We have to, if we're trying to truly engage the parents and the community, we have to become transparent and step our game up with technology. Parents cannot wait until a YouTube video is posted to know what's happening inside the schools. And board members, if you can be outside of these walls and, um, off that stage, and see parents in the making, and those of you know what I'm talking about, when you see parents, it costs you nothing to speak, because speaking might change whatever they have to go back home to, or whatever they facing. You know who I'm talking about. So, what are we gonna do about that issue with Science Park? As we know, and the new board members may not know with the exclusion of Leah and Kim Gaddy, that there are ongoing issues with racism at Science Park for a very long time. This is not new. How are we gonna handle those white supremacist issues? And this won't be the first time or the first night that we hear about these issues in our schools. It only took us to hear about the Science Park issue, the, uh, other school, the, the History High issue, and guess what? Many more schools are gonna come forward, and many more people are gonna come for it. And lastly, we have dealt with 16 murders. How are we handling that in the West Ward? How are we handling that? So, you, I see you brought Verizon to the South Ward, the East Ward, the North Ward. What about the West Ward? So, do better, board members. Do better district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next speaker, Jamarius Renault. Next speaker, Hasana Blake.
Good evening. Hasana Blake, 38 St. Paul Avenue, Newark, New Jersey. On February 25th, 2019, UHS principal Mendez shared my 18-19 mid-year evaluation in Ed Reflect detailing effective and highly effective ratings for all indicators and an overall rating of effective. My 17-18 mid-year and annual ratings detailed the same. To my surprise, just two days later, on February 27th, I was called into the office of Principal Mendez accompanied by Assistant Superintendent Dr. Santos, and completely blindsided with a letter stating my position as VP at UHS was terminated immediately. The reason for my termination and subsequent demotion was verbally explained by Dr. Santos using two simple words, "Principal's discretion." Prior to this, I received nothing indicating that I would be terminated, just two days shy of tenure, nor the immediate financial hardship resulting from this instant $40,000 reduction in salary. For the past two years, I have effectively served as summer principal at New Jersey Regional Day School. My demotion to English teacher thus creates a future financial hardship as well by deeming me ineligible to apply for this summer position. During my 13-year tenure with NPS, seven at American History High School, six at University High School, I have consistently lived by the mantra of my then-principal, Mr. Roger Leon, by paying it forward. Whether as a teacher, teacher-coach, or most recently VP, I have worked tirelessly in awakening the genius in all of our babies and empowering them to be part of the solution. My dedication is evidenced by a record of personal effectiveness, increased student achievement, and countless testimonies from multiple stakeholders, including several present here tonight. As the only administrator at UHS with a master's degree in school counseling, I've spent countless hours beyond by assigned role personally auditing transcripts, identifying students for intervention, facilitating transfers and credit recovery options for timely graduation, and ensuring that all students meet testing requirements for ELA through our portfolio appeals process. Never having received any coaching or feedback from Principal Mendez, I have even invested in my own growth by personally seeking targeted PD on leading and growing PLCs, peer coaching, and the KIP to and through college initiative, just to name a few. There was no reason given for my termination as it is personally motivated. I can produce evidence dating back to last school year when Principal Mendez accused me of making another UHS VP and personal friend of his look bad by sharing my role in the completion of tasks outside of my primary responsibilities. Since then, our professional relationship has been strained. While it appears that Principal Mendez, aided by his sister Acting HR Director, Dr. Yolanda Mendez, have a certain level of autonomy, I would like to minimally gain insight as to how the provision of the 30-day notice entitled to me in my contract could be completely disregarded, and how one of Newark's homegrown educators, a proud UHS graduate, and a lifelong city resident with a proven record of effectiveness could be immediately terminated without cause. On February 26th, Principal Mendez shared at the UHS budget meeting that I and the only other female VP would be cut from the budget for next school year.
Ms. Blake.
As per the directive, he claimed to have received from Superintendent Leon. However, I was never notified that I would be terminated the very next day.
Next speaker, Wilhelmina Holder.
Violation of contract.
I don't see, okay.
Can only be labeled as a personal attack.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Wow, it's hard to follow that. Linden Brown, 220 South Sixth Street, Newark. Um, that's, um, very disturbing to hear. Um, first, I want to commend the wonderful students who performed this evening. They did a phenomenal job, and our athletes this season in New Public Schools did a phenomenal job. Uh, we just have great talent here in the district, and I'm very proud of all of our youth. Um, but they do need to be undergirded with, uh, support, and they need to be recognized when they're doing well. I went to a, um, football game banquet on, um, football team banquet on Friday at West Side High School, and it was really nice, but there are some schools who are giving their kids no recognitions at all. No banquets, no awards, no celebrations for honor roll, super honor roll, perfect attendance. And it's just really, really sad that our kids don't get the recognition that they deserve district-wide. It's not systemic. It's that certain schools doing things, and other schools doing absolutely nothing. And, uh, to our Assistant Superintendent, I'm charging you to ensure that our principals, um, step their game up and make sure that our, uh, children get the recognition that they deserve. I also want to echo what Mrs. Vasquez said. Our children do need, uh, phonics. They do need reading comprehension and reasoning skills. Those skills are very low here in the district. We need to strengthen those and bring some of those fundamentals back to, um, New Public Schools. I took a group of students today, uh, to job interviews. They did, they did get hired. That wasn't the, uh, the most important thing that stood out with me. It was the fact that some of the students, um, even after they got hired and were doing the paperwork, they could not write their names in cursive on that application. They cannot, they said, "I'm sorry, Mr. Brown. I just don't know how to write in cursive." And I said, "That's a travesty that here you are seniors in high school, and you can't sign your name." We did scholarship applications this week. They could not sign their name on those applications. I said, "It does not say print. It says signature." But these things need to be taught in New Public Schools, and yes, parents need to help at home too. But we need to get these things, um, instilled back into our schools. Secondly, our renewed schools are still operating as renewed schools. The principal autonomy is out of control. We have inexperienced and ineffective staff in positions that require highly effective and experienced people in those positions, and they are not. They are MIA. Some of our principals have been in positions for several years, and the test scores are pitiful at this school, single-digit. 13th Avenue, and I look at equipment, and Dr. Horton, we need a change in administration. If we're gonna see an increase in staff morale, uh, because the school climate and culture of these schools is just simply toxic, um, and then the drastic changes that administrations are making, and not including, um, proper staffing and curriculum and student support services is, is just disheartening. Our principals were charged to create budgets for next school year, and they left out vital programs that our children need. You know, we need to make sure our kids have organized recess, and there are programs that will come into the schools, and some schools have them, and some don't. There have been long-term vacancies in district, district in math and science and other core subjects, and our kids are due in, uh, compulsory services. Because these subjects, as well as occupational therapy and speech therapy are in the kids' IEP, and they deserve to have better. We need to get back to a state-of-the-art after-school program like we had years ago. We had a premier program, and now our after-school program is pitiful. And the board needs to do a better job of overseeing principal autonomy. Good evening, everyone. Wilhelmina Holder, 246 18th Avenue, where I was born, right here. This was Hay's home, 45 17th Avenue at the time. So, I'm glad to be back in my home-home. Um, and I want to finish up where Mr. Brown left off. He's absolutely correct. Our students need out-of-school experiences, um, and we're certainly advocating for that to happen. They don't get to travel. They don't even get to go to college fairs out of the district. And that is very important. I know this came up at the business meeting, and I'm gonna advocate that they have those experiences, because what my own children and the other children we took on college fairs experience was interacting with students outside of Newark, interacting with people that they didn't see. 400 colleges are not gonna come to Newark. There are certain colleges that will not come to Newark. We need to go to them at the national college fair where those people are represented, and our children need to see what competition looks like. It doesn't look like the children in Newark, trust me on that. And, um, we need to find the money to make that happen. There should be no excuses. We say we love our children. Let's make it happen, school by school. And speaking of making it happen, I had a conversation coming in, because I've been advocating this week for special needs, um, parents, certain parents, and we found out, Mr. Superintendent, that there was a disconnect between the IEP and 504. And, um, I spoke briefly with, um, Dr. Granata about it. She acknowledged that, um, what we were saying had some validity. We need to tighten that up, because what we found that students who were classified 504, um, could benefit from some of the, um, IEP services, but because they were not classified, they could not reach those services. And, um, we were able to document that in, uh, I'm not gonna say what case, because, you know, that's a private matter. Um, also, the other thing that we require investigation of, and I mean really require, Mr. Brown and I, it just drives us crazy. At this point, we get too far too many senior athletes who have yet not applied to college, have yet not taken an SAT. And then when we find out why, their GPA, they should have never been playing to begin with. So, that's a parent responsibility, but the district must step up and monitor and investigate that. You have children playing with 1.9, barely a 2.0, um, and, and that's just unacceptable, because when the scouts come to look, and they come look at our talented students, they have to walk away, because they cannot access those students. Our parents must take some responsibility. Stop listening to these coaches who are giving you bad advice. And the district must take some responsibility to ensure that the coaches are properly giving the right information so our children can go on and be scholar athletes. I write scholarship guides, and so many of them could qualify based on talent, but when we look at that GPA, Lord have mercy. And the other thing that we really do need to deal with, and that is the uniform grading policy. Um, Mr. Superintendent, I'm asking you to look at that, as well as the disconnect between those students, and I know you're working on this piece, that come from foreign places, from the Caribbean, from Africa, from England, and the gray trans, um, versions. We need to look at that, because children are being harmed. So, I don't know what training's been provided, but it needs to be done.
but it needs to happen, and it needs to happen quickly. And the other thing, of course, is Science High. We need to look at the racism that has been exhibited there.
Thank you, Ms. Holder.
Those children who have been harmed. And I'm asking for a complete investigation at Science High School and the removal of those parties responsible.
Thank you, Ms. Holder. Next speaker, Nicole Bennett.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Bennett, and I'm currently a CIO at Eastside High School. On Monday, January 28, 2019, I was notified by Edwin Mendez, Principal of University High School, that my position as CIO has been eliminated from the budget at the request of Superintendent Leon. I inquired about my options for the remaining years to come because I do not wish to leave Newark. However, Principal Mendez noted that I would most likely have a difficult time being hired in any capacity as an administrator, whether as a VP or future position as a DC, because seniority rights would bump me. After several ignored requests to meet in person, on February 25, 2019, Principal Mendez shared my 2018-2019 mid-year evaluation in EdReflect. Though we never met to discuss the ratings in person or share any comments in person, the evaluation narrative detailed effective and highly effective ratings for all indicators within the leadership framework. My 2016-17 and 2017-18 annual ratings were also effective. On the same day Ms. Hassanah Blake was terminated, I too was completely blindsided when, on February 27, just two days after receiving my mid-year effective ratings, I was notified that I would be transferred immediately. Assistant Superintendent Dr. Mario Santos was present as he informed me of this immediate transfer with Principal Mendez. During that meeting, I asked Dr. Santos if the request to transfer me could take effect after Math Interims III because I did not want to leave my math team prior to its administration, which was only going to take place the following week. But Principal Mendez interjected, "We'll be just fine without you. I want you gone now." To this day, I have no idea what I did to warrant an immediate transfer, and I have not been given the opportunity to correct any wrongdoing as I know I'm not perfect, but I at least would like to know what I did to cause this transfer. The letter I received on March 1 stated that my transfer was actually voluntary. However, I assure you, I did not ask to leave university, and I did not leave like the way I was told to leave, like a thief in the night, not saying goodbye to the students and staff members that I've established positive relationships with over the past almost three years. Upon receipt of this transfer letter, I immediately notified NPS transfers of the error, but I have still received no response. During my nine-year tenure in NPS, first as a math teacher at Malcolm Exchabas High School and then at History High School, I consistently performed at high levels of achievement. I've spent countless documented hours beyond my assigned role as CIO to support teachers and students in all aspects of education. In fact, Principal Mendez, on many occasions, would leave me in charge of the building whenever he had to leave for personal and professional matters. During those times, I was able to stop a pedophile teacher from preying on one of our young students. I collaborated with Newark police officers to assist with ongoing investigations of serious matters with our students. As Women's History Month comes to a close, I am left with the horrifying thought that my drive for excellence, coupled with my willingness to take the initiative to do what's best for our students, has deemed me a threat to the principal and thus warranted my transfer. I assure you, my strong character was never displayed to make the principal seem incompetent, nor was I trying to step on his leadership. Based on my professional record and countless testimonies of positivity, I am left to think that Principal Mendez used his sister's position as acting director to terminate me, actually transfer me immediately. We cannot allow this nepotism to cause good people to leave UHS. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. That concludes the public participation portion.
We need a motion.
Madam Chair.
Board Member Owens?
Yes, thank you. I didn't know if anyone else was going to respond to public participation. So, good evening again, everyone. And I'll just, I'll try to be quick.
Board Member Owens?
Yes.
I don't think this is a time for a dialogue with the speakers?
I didn't ask anyone a question, so I don't understand dialogue.
No.
Public participation is complete, and I'm giving a response.
To the speakers?
To, in general, to public participation that has occurred.
Okay, not to an individual speaker?
Madam Chair, if you'll allow me to speak.
I just want to make sure-
And if I say something-
Board Member Owens, I want to make sure we follow the protocol which is to go to board relations.
And cannot say.
Okay.
I'm good. Thank you. I appreciate it.
So, in my three years of being on this board, and even prior to that, being someone who would come to the mic and talk about particularly the inequities in this district, I just wanted an overall comment as I proceeded to say, "I'm going to make this quick." So, some people are unclear about what institutional racism is. Some people think that there is no racism in Newark just because it's majority black and brown. But that's not how that works. It's about power and a structure and about how inequities continue to be perpetuated. So for me, it's disturbing to hear several members from the community come up and speak about these issues, and it points to the fact that we need to have direct, honest dialogue as a board about these issues and make sure that we are resolving them through improving the climate and culture of our schools. So I just want to acknowledge that I heard what was said. And in the time that I have on this board, I will make sure it's something that continues to be discussed. And just for an example of institutional racism, let's just say hypothetically, at a board meeting, there were three employees that signed up to speak, and all three of them are black women. That says, would say something hypothetically if that were to happen. Thank you.
We need a motion to approve the items which are listed-
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Board Member Gaddy.
I just know that. I do want to, first of all, thank all the speakers who came before us today. And I know we cannot speak of personnel items. Was there executive session scheduled?
No.
It's on the agenda?
Because someone said it wasn't. Was, I just want clarification.
Board Member Gaddy, it was on the agenda, but there were no items for executive session, so we proceeded to the next item.
So to the Chair, Reggie. I just want, you know, because when I spoke to you.
So technically, a number of items were discussed in this month's Personnel Committee meeting. The committee moved forward with the recommendations. However, Ms. Gaddy, if you would like to go in executive session and have a discussion, that's your prerogative. You can put it on the table. I would not, I would not, I will support it if you ask that request.
Because I just had some clarification. So that's why I asked the Chair. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Board Member Gaddy, and thank you Personnel Chair Bledsoe.
Now we need a motion to approve items in the Block 12.0. That is 12.1 Finance and Operations votes, including Finance and Operations, Purchasing, and there are no items under Facilities. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Norton, do we have a second?
A second?
So, so before we move forward, Madam Chair, and I think-
I don't have a second yet.
Ms. List, before we move forward, we should follow procedures where the Chair called for the question of items. That has not happened tonight. Ms. Gaddy, they raised a question. If we would like to have a discussion just in general and not specifically have a conversation about individuals, I'm okay with that. So before we move with the voting items, we should probably, if the board is open to it, just so that we are all clear, we're not going to discuss individuals, but we could just talk about process and procedure. If you're okay with that, Ms. Gaddy.
Yes, I would like that to occur. Thank you.
We had a motion on the table to approve the Finance and Operations items. I heard no second, and I gather now there is a motion to go into executive session. Mr. Bledsoe?
So, Ms. List, can we have the person who made the motion to approve withdraw their motion? And then we-
There was no second, so it doesn't need to be withdrawn at this time.
So I make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Well, we can do that, we can discuss that in closed session. So we're, I heard a motion by Mr. Bledsoe and second by Ms. Gaddy, is that correct?
Owens.
Owens, okay. To go into closed session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters, is that correct?
Yes, in general.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Motion to reconvene in open session?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Norton, second by Mr. Bledsoe. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to reconvene. We're reconvening in open session. I heard all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to reconvene after coming back into open session from closed session requires a motion.
From, from General Counsel.
Second.
Well, any member can make a motion. 9:30, we're reconvened. The next item on the agenda is a motion to approve Finance and Operations items. That is all of the items listed under Item 12.0, Finance and Operations and Purchasing Items. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Norton, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hill? We'll take a roll call.
Ms. List, before we take the roll call, just would like to, discussion. I am in support of Item 12.24. I just think going forward, when we have certain projects happening in certain schools and before work starts, that the board should be informed. But once again, I am full support of this item.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the 12.0 items? Any further questions by board members? Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we need a motion to approve the items listed as 13.0, General Counsel, Legal Matters. Ms. Norton, second? Ms. Hill? Take a roll call on those items. Mr. Bledsoe?
Once again, Ms. List-
I'm sorry, yes, any discussion or any questions?
Discussion in committee. I discussed with staff the formation of the Affirmative Action Team. And the list of individuals is listed as General Counsel, Chief of Staff, and also the Affirmative Action Officer. I also requested that someone from Purchasing be on that team. And I also asked that an individual from the community or the diverse community at large be reflected and represented as well. But once again, I will support the item with the additions and actually hoping that an individual from the community be placed on the Affirmative Action Team. Thank you. And 13.7, I just don't understand why the item is not coming under Finance and Operations. And it's accepting of a grant.
That action item was, the resolution was prepared by our office. It could have been either one of them, actually. Could have been either under Finance and Operations or under Legal.
Okay, but I'm in support of it. I'm just used to grant acceptances coming under Finance and Operations.
Madam Chair Masby? Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the community. Mr. Bledsoe? I think it would provide clarity. The acceptance of the grant requires a significant contract between the district and the entity that is making the donation. In this case, I think it's Cheerios. It also requires a W9. So Legal Counsel and her office reviewed that contract and put forward the resolution.
So what specifically in the contract was discussed? Because I don't-
It's just their terms and conditions to accept their donation.
On how the money should be spent? Or-
No, it is a, in their case, a standard contract that they put together for all their donations. As a public entity in the state of New Jersey, there are certain clauses and, I don't want to say information, but clauses and language is the word I'm looking for that are used by entities that may be prohibited by statute in the state of New Jersey. And Legal Counsel's responsibility is to ensure that none of those are included. So sometimes there's a negotiation, even on a standard boilerplate, from an entity.
Okay. But for the record, I am in support of this item. I just-
Understood, but I just want to give you a clearer explanation.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on 13.0, General Counsel, Legal Matters? Any further questions?
Just one quickly thing, Mr. Superintendent. On the Affirmative Action item, are you, will you take my suggestions or recommendations into consideration?
Oh, yeah, definitely. I think that, it was my understanding that your stipulation was based on those recommendations, and I'm in agreement with that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we need a motion to approve the items listed under 14.0 Personnel. That is 14.1 to 14.8.
Motion.
Mr. Bledsoe, do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Gomez? Any discussion, Ms. Owens?
Board Member Owens?
Yes, I'd like to separate the reclassifications and the reassignment slash transfers. and the reassignment slash transfers.
Are you saying you want a separate motion, or you just want to be able to vote separately? Because you can vote separately whether we have a separate motion or not.
Whichever we find is easier.
So, are you asking to pull it from the consent agenda?
Yes, I want, yes.
Okay.
Is the motion as modified acceptable to the member who made the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve Items 14.1, 14.2, 14.3, 14.4, 14.5, and 14.8, not 14.6 and 14.7. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Board Member Bledsoe?
One thing, this is actually a new process that we're doing tonight. I don't, I don't have a problem with supporting separating this. I just think that it puts us in a very awkward position tonight. But on another note, I would like to discuss 14.3, which is the resolution approving Collective Bargaining Agreement. I would like to commend district staff, Dr. Mendez, and also commend Joanne Watson for their tireless work, the tireless work on bringing this agreement to the board for a vote tonight. We often talk about some of the negative things that are happening in the district, but to actually have an agreement on the resolution for approval is something that should be commended, considering a lot of the units oftentimes go without having a national contract. So, Dr. Mendez, I commend you, and also commend Ms. Watson on bringing this to the board. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Does a board member wish to make a motion on the additional personnel items now, or hold it till later?
We should probably hold it to 16.0, where it comes up on the agenda.
Okay. Then we need a motion to approve Items under 15.0 Program and Instruction, that is, Items 15.1 through 15.9. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Norton?
Second.
Mr. Bledsoe, second? Roll call? Oh, no, I'm sorry. Any discussion?
Just, sorry, I'm on the roll tonight. I'm not clear on 15.5. Maybe it was explained in the committee. Can you explain data sharing, and what type of agreement are we discussing? Maybe the committee chair can...
In the business meeting, it was shared.
Data sharing in general. Do you want to talk about that?
No, 15.5 data sharing agreement with, I don't know what that is.
Any data sharing agreement, sometimes they are standalone agreements?
Sorry, that's school business administrators answering the question.
In terms of data sharing agreements, they are, as the General Counsel began to indicate, they can be standalone pieces of information. This is actually Rutgers University Abbott Institute, and they are looking, the fact that it is research in terms of health in youth beyond just absenteeism. They're going to have to have access to certain data. It may not be data as it relates to specific and discrete identities of our students, but data much like the data the superintendent has shared on in terms of absenteeism, in terms of those things. Typically, when we do data sharing with an entity, there are confidentiality agreements that are made. There's an understanding that certain student, especially particularly, student information is not shared, because we are extremely sensitive about that and want to ensure. But in order to do research, you must have data in order to identify trends, in order to identify what's happening.
And that's the point. I'm concerned is protecting student data.
We, we do, and we are, we are very clear and very specific on that.
Now hypothetically, would this have anything to do with the report that took place in the legislature with the Joint Committee on Public Schools?
Um, I'm not sure, but they may, they, they don't have, it doesn't have anything to directly do with that, but they may consider some of that information as data, too.
Okay.
Okay?
And 15.8, new elective courses at Arts High School.
Mm-hmm.
If Mr. Dr. Fitzhugh can explain that.
Good evening, Board Member Bledsoe. Just very quickly, in terms of the new courses, they want to establish two great courses for the students that are entering to their senior year at Arts High School. So, within the Google Drive for Programs and Instruction gives the summaries of each of those specific, specific rather, courses, going from electives to full-year courses for the students at Arts High School.
So, just for the record, could you let me know? I don't have access to that right now.
Madam Chair? Board Member Norton?
And then also, just to piggyback, Board Member Bledsoe, in terms of the electives, sorry, courses, they were formerly electives at Arts High School. They are now being turned into courses. And so, I think that's a huge plus for our students at Arts High School.
So, what courses? Because it doesn't say new courses here, it says elective.
So, the first course is Live Audition. It's a five-credit elective course, which is open to students of all majors at Arts High School who are interested in turning their passion for singing and performance into a career as a recording artist in the age of home, studio recording, and social media marketing. The second course is, I'm sorry, the second course is called Singing Actor. It's also another five-credit course, and it's open to all Arts High School students interested in pursuing a career in vocal performance and/or musical theater. Students will receive daily instruction and musical score study, lyrical and dramatic interpretation of musical selections, and vocal technique designed specifically for health and stamina in the musical theater setting.
Thank you.
You're so very welcome.
Madam Chair?
Board Member Norton?
Yes, and I apologize. I didn't mean to say they were formerly electives. They were formerly clubs
Clubs.
that are now being offered as electives.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have Items Pulled from Consent. We need a motion to approve items that are listed as 14.6 and 14.7 under the Personnel category. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
So, technically, for the record...
I'm sorry, who was it?
I'm sorry, Ms. Norton.
That was Gaddy and...
Technically, for the record, they're no longer 14.7 and 14.6. They become 16.1, 16.2.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Bledsoe.
Did we get the motion in the second?
Yes. It was Gaddy and Haynes.
Ms. Gaddy, Ms. Motion by Ms. Gaddy, second by Ms. Haynes. Thank you. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Board Member Owens?
I just would ask that certain employees be rice.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any questions? We'll do a roll call. Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
Abstain.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Abstain.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Abstain.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair?
Board Member Bledsoe?
Just really quickly, it has been brought to my attention under a section of 15.0, the field trips were omitted. So, we'd have to vote on that. Yeah, it went up to 15.9. It should have went up to 15.10. We still should have, vote on the record on it. So, I put the motion to vote on 15.10, which is field trips.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Bledsoe, second by Ms. Gaddy, to approve 15.10 field trips. Any discussion? Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Madam Chair?
Board Member Norton?
Good evening. So, the City of Newark have been conducting lifeguard trainings. The first lifeguard training started last Thursday, and the next training will, if I'm not mistaken, on April 25th. This training that's occurring now is happening at this high school, Central High School, at their, the pool downstairs. The next one, I'm not too sure where exactly, but they're trying to make sure that they're hosting these trainings at the high school. And so, I definitely encourage everyone who has students or children that are 15 years and older, who are decent swimmers, to definitely bring their children out on April 25th so they can become certified lifeguards and have acquired lifeguard jobs over the summer. Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Norton, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bledsoe, all in favor?
Oh, we have any more?
Wait, we have a town hall.
They're not done with the announcements, please. Thank you.
We have a town hall, youth town hall meeting Thursday at Weekway High School, starting at 5:00 PM. I'm encouraging all youth to be there and to have your voices heard. It's hosted by the City of Newark Youth Ambassador's Office, the Youth College Office, in collaboration with NPS.
What date? 28?
Thursday.
28.
They're done?
Just for the record, we have our budget hearing tomorrow, March 27th, starting at 6:00 PM. I'm inviting the open public to come out and be a part of that process. It's very important at Science Park High School, and that's all I have.
And also, I would like to mention that the Office of Special Education, which falls under Ms. Granato, is going to kick off their Autism Awareness Month on April 4th at 9:00 AM at 765 Lower Level on Broad Street, and the participating schools will be 13th Avenue JFK, 14th Avenue, Quipman, Spencer Miller, Ivy Hill, New Jersey Regional Day, First Avenue McKinley, American History, and Central High School.
I just like, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Board Member Hill?
So, I just wanted to acknowledge Ms. Sharice Green, the art teacher over at Chancellor Avenue School. She was awarded this weekend, on Saturday, by Amina Baraka on behalf of Women's History work, for the awesome work that she's doing over at Chancellor Avenue School. So, I just wanted to acknowledge her for that, because I'm not sure if other board members had known. I had the honor of attending this ceremony where she was awarded.
Call the question. Is that it, guys? And just a friendly reminder, tomorrow, 6:00 PM, please share with your neighbors, and I hope to see you all tomorrow in attendance at Science Park High School. 6:00 PM, we will have our budget hearing. And can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Bledsoe, second?
By Hill.
Ms. Hill, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, that's it.
9:49.